I would now call it July 15, 2013, Blue Springs City Council Meeting in order. If you will stand with me, observe a moment of silence, and then I will lead you into the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. I want to welcome you in attendance, as well as those that might be watching on cable TV7, to tonight's Blue Springs City Council meeting. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, and councilman Fowler asked to approve items B and G. Items B and G. Those being pulled, I would accept the motion to approve all the other items remaining.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilman Quabell?
Aye.
Councilman Levitsy?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Okay, item B, councilman Fowler.
Yes, your honor, this is an item where it seems to be more administrative, where the developers for Adams Dairy Landing, I think they're Adams, what is it, Blue Springs Three?
Development Three.
Development Three is the current one, and a portion of the properties under their ownership is going to be moved to a new company name or LLC, and a portion of them are going to stay with the current ownership, correct?
Staff, would you like to-
That's what the proposal is?
Yes. Mr. McDonald?
Okay, so I want to make, yeah. And I did call and talk to Bob McDonald today relative to this issue. My concern is, I recall a couple of years ago, back when the bonds were issued for Red Development, these are sizable bonds, out to the budget year 2040, there's a lot of money on the line here, but there was a little bit of optimism at the time from city staff and from Red Development, that someday those bonds would not be backed by the cities, by the citizens of Blue Springs as they are today, and the developer would take, would reissue these bonds, put them in their name, which is where the risk should be. If they're going to collect, if the developer's going to collect the profits, they should take the risk on that side as well. And now that they're changing ownership and dividing properties, my concern is, which one of these two entities, you know, is going to help and follow up on that commitment to reissue these bonds in the developer's name versus the citizens of Blue Springs, and I wanted to have a little, you know, some-
Discussion.
Have, yeah, staff share some light on that.
Okay, who would like, Mr. McDonald?
The developer, Blue Springs Three LLC, is still responsible for all of those things, even though some of the things have been split off, and as we talked today, the new limited partner is owned by the other two, Blue Springs Two and Blue Springs Three, and Blue Springs Three is the manager, and Blue Springs Two is a general partner and controls, one of, general partner controls Two, so that the whole thing's, in a sense, controlled by the same people out of Red Development that control Blue Springs Three, but Blue Springs Three does not relieve itself of the responsibilities that you're talking about, such as they are, I mean, there's nothing in any agreement that says they have to do that, it's just a commitment that they made, and as we talked today, I don't, this change in form doesn't affect, doesn't make it more likely that that will not occur, or more likely that it will occur, you know, to be honest, as I said, I mean, we're kind of in the same place we were before this agreement. The agreement is allowed pursuant to the original development agreement to transfer, so long as it's to an affiliated or controlled entity, which it is.
Okay.
That's probably clear as mud.
Yeah, I mean, it still seems like we're in somewhere fractionalizing, you know, into two entities, and I'm going to assume that one of those two entities has more assets and less liabilities than the other two, and that, to me, would seem like, you know, they would have the ability to go out and get bonds and credit easier than the other entity, but if, I mean-
The reason given for needing to do this is part of a refinancing, to keep the project going and to pay off some of the debt that was owed to, owed to one of the, about the Mutual of Omaha.
Okay. Well, I guess, that said, I mean, I support this in the fact that it's an administrative issue more than anything, that's why it's on the consent versus, I guess, a line item, but, you know, the main impetus is that I do hope that Red Development and city staff can work towards moving that debt from the citizens of Blue Springs and back on to developer who should be taking the risk and the profits, so.
Okay.
That's all I, yeah.
Any other comments? Is there a motion to approve item B?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. Item G.
Yes, your honor, I have, you know, shared concern about taking public money and putting it in privately-held companies, and I've been over this one before relative to the Americas Community Bank, I think we've got a lot of public infrastructure with streets and sidewalks that we could put this money towards, and putting in the private property is not where I'm going to, I can't support that, so we're going in against this.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So moved, your honor.
Okay, a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries.
That's a no.
Okay, that brings us to item four, which is a public hearing regarding amended Adams Dairy Landing PUD concept plan.
Your honor, I believe you actually have two public hearings tonight on this item, and do you want to take both of those?
Yes, why don't we take them all? And also, a public hearing regarding an ordinance rezoning property from General Business Restricted Overlay District, General Business Restricted Overlay, well, that stuff's up you normally say.
Your honor, I have two exhibits to offer on behalf of, one of PUDC 613-3995. Exhibit number one includes a city council information form with attachments, staff report with attachments, affidavit of publication as advertised in Blue Springs Examiner, June 22, 2013, application with attachments, 185-foot notification map, names, addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site, and copy of letters sent to property owners. And on behalf of the other public hearing, which is RZ 613-3992, the exhibit includes a city council information form with attachments, staff report with attachments, affidavit of publication as advertised in Blue Springs Examiner, June 22, 2013, application with attachments, 185-foot notification map, names, addresses of property owners within 185 feet of site, and copy of letters sent to property owners, and these are all the exhibits we have to offer on behalf of the city.
Okay, Mr. Hawley? On behalf of the city.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Actually, before you, tonight, there are three items, there is an amendment to the planned unit development for Adams Dairy Landing, a associated rezoning, again, for Adams Dairy Landing, and finally, there's a plat, final plat, amended final plat for As you're all aware, Adams Dairy Landing is located along Adams Dairy Parkway and northeast Coronado, it is, again, just south of the Adams Dairy Parkway-I-70 interchange. The original PUD concept plan for this particular development was approved in September of 2007, and at that point, they divided Adams Dairy Landing into three areas. Area one is the area that has the major tenants on the south side of northeast Coronado Drive and east of Adams Dairy Parkway, it is the area that has the Target and the Gordmans, Coles, TJ Maxx, and Ross Dress for Less, as well as many other smaller tenants. Area two is immediately north of that, north of northeast Coronado Drive, and we will get back to that, it is the area of primary concern tonight and the reason for the amendment of the concept plan. Area three is the area that is north of northeast Coronado Drive and west of Adams Dairy Parkway, and that is the area that has the recently-built AT&amp;T Building, Sleep Number, Olive Garden, Verizon, and Chick-fil-A. The area two, which is, which is really the focus of this amended PUD, had an originally approved final PUD plan, that plan was approved around March of 2009, and on that plan, they provided for several restaurants along each of the five lots. The amendment that's being proposed is to change that restaurant use and either add or change to retail use, and the reason for that is lot three-
Which is this lot in this area?
Was originally slated for a single sit-down restaurant and is now proposed for a multi-tenant retail office building, as well as a second lot that will be, at this point, I think the user is unidentified, so the developer can speak a bit to that. That's somewhat hard to read, but basically what that is, is that is section 40304O of the city's Unified Development Code, and what it says is that in order for a PUD final plan to be approved, there cannot be any changes in the use categories, and since it was originally called out as restaurant and is now moving to retail office type of use, this plan has to go through the PUD concept plan amendment, and that's what the amendment is about. So in effect, it does not impact any of area one-
Push that one back.
Nor will it impact any of area three, it is strictly area two. The zoning is really quite simple, it does not change the zoning designation, the zoning designation will remain general business with the restricted overlay. The restricted overlay zoning ties the zoning to the PUD concept plan, so if the concept plan changes, the zoning has to change as well in order for it to be consistent with the PUD concept plan. So that is what the rezoning is about. And then finally, they are proposing an amended final plat.
The area here?
Excuse me? Is lot, the original lot three, that particular lot is approximately 1.98 acres, and what they're proposing to do is to subdivide that into two lots, the lot on the west side will be approximately 1.1 acres, 1.01 acres, so really essentially an acre, and that is the lot where the proposed multi-tenant office retail building is being proposed, and we do have the application for a PUD final plan for that particular one, and we have seen the building, and that will be going to the planning commission at the next planning commission on, on the 22nd of this month. With that, I will open it for any questions, and the developer is here as well.
If you'd like to hear any questions from the council. Councilman Fowler?
Yes, your honor, and this may be a little bit more financial, it may be more directed at staff versus just community development, but the uses that are going to be here that are proposed to be changing for the PUD, not really so much for the rezoning, but I'm going to address this in the PUD concept plan stage. You say it goes from restaurants to more service, you know, and there's a lot of things in the service, you know, that, those types of businesses, a lot of services, if it's a medical office, for instance, they don't really collect sales tax, whereas a, you know, restaurant collects sales tax, and like we said before, the citizens are on the line for this debt, while the building property helps pay down part of that debt a little bit, the sales tax really, as an engine, really helps drive that vehicle in the right direction, so it sounds like, you know, that was, to build the pro formas and everything like that, to make the project work, sales tax was a big key component, and this may be going to less sales tax generating businesses, so how does that impact, you know, the debt and everything like that? So it's more of financial.
I appreciate the question, Eric, would you like to-
Councilman Fowler, I may ask Assistant City Administrator Christine Cates to weigh in on this issue, and I know the developer's here and they may be able to speak to the mix. Jim, refresh my memory on this total square footage of some of the footprints of what we're talking about on this, are we approximately 4,000 to 5,000 square feet of the types of pad users that we would see, or is it something less than that?
No, we're at approximately the same number, slightly larger, I believe, square footage-wise.
The point I'm going with, and I appreciate Councilman Fowler's comment, is, is the major sales tax users, the big box users are already present, and those are the big engine drivers, and so we would expect to see perhaps marginal or nominal changes with some of those pad site tenants. Certainly, it's in the developer's best interest to try to generate as much increment on this project as possible, as they are, we haven't brought forward anything to the city council, but there is a potential of another bond issue at some point in time, and so the more capacity and the more revenue that's generated with each and every user creates a greater recipe for success for any future bond issues. Christine, do you want to weigh in on this issue?
Sure, the total incentive on this project was about 49 million, and to date, the developer's been reimbursed about 27 million, so there's $22 million in potential reimbursement out there on this project, and so in order to be able to receive that $22 million, they would have to certify all those costs, as well as a bond issue would be based on the users that are yet to come, so if the, the use has changed and generates less sales tax, then that would make less increment available for reimbursement to the developer, so then we wouldn't issue bonds to that amount that was projected in the pro forma.
It's a lot there.
Okay, like I said, right now, to me, the citizens are holding the debt on this, I think, I'd love for the developer to share some of the profits since they're sharing all the risk with us, that'd be nice if they do that too, so. Any other, any other questions?
Councilman Fowler, or, councilman and city council, we provide you with quarterly reports?
By-
By, yes, to a year that you get that address the specific performance of the Adams Dairy Landing project, and as we have pointed out to you, since the bonds were issued, the project is generating sufficient revenue to pay the debt, and it's generating revenue that is going into our general fund and our capital projects fund, so while the city did make a huge commitment in 2009 and 10, the project is performing very well, and at least your staff is pleased with, with what we see, but certainly, councilman, we want to see a day when we're able to get out of that debt.
Any other comments? Maybe this is a question for the developer rather than you, Mr. Hawley, but with, what we're doing is we're reducing the inventory on sit-down restaurants, because it was restaurants, and we're saying we're going to make it something else, you know, I think we already did, when we, sleep by the numbers, I love it, I want to sleep by the numbers bed, but I can't eat it.
Good point.
And I had my heart set on a Red Lobster going there.
I would like to let the developer address that issue.
Okay.
Thank you.
Please note that, developer, when you come up.
Well said, your honor.
Jeff McMahon, 4717 Central, Red Development, Kansas City, Missouri.
Good evening, everybody, thanks for your time and attention to this, and I think there's a question in front of me as far as-
Yes, sit down.
One of my mattresses, yeah.
Do we have anything in the pipeline?
Yes, we do. Some things in the- Yes, we do, absolutely, and to the Red Lobster question, the, you know, Olive Gardens from Darden, who also owns a Red Lobster chain, so we are, we are discussing those concepts, or several concepts that that particular company has that we continue to discuss, even the glass, even though I guess technically this is one less building that could be filled with a restaurant, there's still ample opportunity to bring restaurants to the community, and we're negotiating currently with many of them, so that's, that hasn't changed, that we love restaurants, in fact, in today's retail environment, most people consider restaurants the anchor, unlike years ago, so we continue to go after them, of course, sales tax is an important issue for us as well, so, and we keep our eye on the ball, as was mentioned, it's to our benefit to keep the sales tax high, and we continue to do that, and we're very pleased with the project today, but this is a good opportunity for us. The tenant that we're talking to is a national, I'm not going to say retailer, but it's, they identify and go into national malls, packed dental, it's a very good credit tenant, and we're very excited to have them, and that's the location that they wanted, and we're, we're doing our best to accommodate that, so. With that said, I'd also say that, you know, we have seen staff's comments, we went through those with the planning commission, and we agree with the comments and take no exceptions, so with that, I'll just take any questions you may have.
Any questions from Mr. McMahon?
Councilman Quabell, then, Councilman Fowler.
On the restaurant issue, I mean, by doing this, you are reducing the number of restaurant pad sites even beyond the one that you're allocating to this tenant, obviously, you're still pursuing restaurants, where are you planning to put them?
There's several we're talking to now in line in the two buildings that we've yet to build, as one example, there's also some, although not on this plan, there's still some internal pads within, I think it's area one, that are still available, and with great interest there too, so.
There's still-
There's still pads available, there's still space available in these two buildings here, there's pads available here, and here, and here, and here, so there's still ample opportunity to, to get those restaurants out there. And I also, I don't know how interested you are in this type of detail, but, you know, the last four or five years have been challenging for restaurants, and especially the sit-down, the sit-down type, fast food, you know, people have less money to spend, they do fast food, it's a little cheaper, we're now starting to see that come back around now, we're seeing a lot more activity from the sit-down restaurants, but the only deals that are being done over the last four or five years is with the Darden Group, which we were able to get, it had been more of the, I won't call names out, but, you know, the Chick-fil-A, which we did get, and many other of those fast foods, so they're important, they're an important part of any project, but we're certainly wanting the sit-down restaurants, it keeps people there longer, they tend to shop more.
Thank you.
Councilman Fowler?
I think that was the intent of my question as well, you know, those do look like, I mean, you do mention there's some lots within, on the south side of the road there, but those look like sizable lots there that could be used for a good sit-down restaurant as well, so I think we're all amiss at the, it looks like what is going to be a lost opportunity for us, you know, to fill those with restaurants, so that's what a lot of our citizens desire, that's why it was originally platted like that, I guess.
Any other questions? Saying none, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak in favor of, in favor of, in opposition to? Opposition to, I guess we'll close this portion of the, everything was contained in that one public hearing, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll close this public- Next, we'll have an introduction, ring of bill 4258.
I introduce it, your honor.
First reading of bill number 4258, an ordinance approving an amended Adams Dairy Landing PUD concept plan.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign?
Second reading of bill number 4258, an ordinance approving an amended Adams Dairy Landing PUD concept plan.
Move the bill be approved on a second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Councilman Levitsy?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Quabell?
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Next, we have introduction, ring of bill 4259.
I introduce it, your honor.
Okay.
First reading of bill number 4259, an ordinance rezoning property from General Business Restricted Overlay District GBRO to General Business Restricted Overlay District GBRO regulated by the amended Adams Dairy Landing PUD concept plan.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign?
Second reading of bill number 4259, an ordinance rezoning property from General Business Restricted Overlay District GBRO to General Business Restricted Overlay District GBRO regulated by the amended Adams Dairy Landing PUD concept plan.
Move the bill be approved on a second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call, please.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Quabell?
Aye.
Councilman Levitsy?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4438.
Next, we have introduction, ring of bill 4260.
I introduce it, your honor.
Okay.
First reading of bill number 4260, an ordinance approving amended final plat for Adams Dairy Landing, second plat, lots 3A and 3B, city of Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign?
Second reading of bill number 4260, an ordinance approving amended final plat for Adams Dairy Landing, second plat, lots 3A and 3B, city of Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri.
Move the bill be approved on a second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call, please.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Quabell?
Aye.
Councilman Levitsy?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4439.
Next, we have a presentation by Ms. Toni Pitchford from the United States Census Bureau. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, I'm Toni Pitchford, and I am the Data Dissemination Specialist for the Department of Commerce Bureau of the City, I am your data dissemination specialist, and I've met with the mayor, and I've also met with Todd and some of the other representatives from the city, but my purpose here today is to talk to you about having the community made aware that the census does not come every 10 years, we do that, but we're also in the field 365 days out of the year, a lot of people do not understand that, they don't know that, so when our representatives knock on the doors, they don't respond, because the first thing they tell us is, "I did that, I did that in 2010, get away from my door." Well, what they don't know is, when you hear about the unemployment rate every month, that's us, that's the survey of income, when you hear about, I'm sorry, current population survey, when you hear about ACS, which is what took over the long form, you used to get a long form, some people got a short form, in 2010, you got a short form with 10 questions, the ACS, which is the American Community Survey, has taken that on, and that is how the city is now getting their information on a more readily availability. You would not have to wait 10 years to get the information about the changes within the community, you can now get your information on an annual basis or a three-year basis, depending on the population, and for Blue Springs, you would get it every three years. When we talk about survey of income program participation, that's how you know what your residents are using, and that's how we know what needs to be done, I was just listening, and I was very intrigued by the zoning for the, the restaurants and the change in the zoning and all of that, but I also thought about the fact that we do the CE program, which is the consumer expenditure, and that's how we know where people are spending their money, how they're spending their money, which is how your restaurants are looking to see if they really want to come into the community, because Red Lobster is not coming if the majority of the population is under the age of 10, they can't sell no lobsters, and you're not going to get a McDonald's if the population is- McDonald's if the population is over the age of sixty, fifty, sixty, because I don't eat Happy Meals anymore either. So, telling my age, I'm sorry. But we have these programs, and that's how we know what's going on in the country. That's how we know if we have enough programs for the seniors, how we know if we're working fairly with our veterans as they come home. That's how we know what the housing stock is all about. And my goal as your data dissemination specialist, it used to be partnership, so pardon me, because it's such a long word, is to work within the community, to build a relationship within the community, to come out and work with the schools, to show the young people how to start looking up information, that they can get used to it, to work with the colleges, to work with the business, to work with people to help them understand what it means. Now, the bottom line is, is that we divide our four hundred and thirty billion dollars a year, and based on the American Community Survey, that's where the money is being divided. And if, and that's as well with other programs. But if the community is not responding, if they do not respond when we knock on the doors, the numbers are skewed. And the only people that lose out are the people in the community. And my goal is to come into the communities, to come out into your districts, to talk with your residents when you have your community meetings, when you have your monthly meetings with your residents, and to explain to them. And I know that a lot of people say Big Brother is watching. But the only way to know what is needed within the community and to make sure that the money comes into the community is to make sure that the people in the community respond. We also have jobs. That's something that people, they don't really think about the census until every ten years, and they think about a temporary job. But we have jobs, and we're still hiring people around the country on a continuous basis. We never closed down recruiting. Well, we did when we had the budget crisis, and we're still doing a little bit of that. But we're back hiring now. We are hiring. And it's a good job. It's a good job for eighteen and overs, as long as there's no criminal record. They can work, and once we train them, this is the best possible thing that they can do to earn extra money. I have three grandchildren in college, and I pray that they get on the Census Bureau, because I need them to work part-time. But there are others. We have seniors that could use a little part-time money as well. And they're knocking on the doors of their community where people know them. Now, my goal is not to take up a lot of time, but as you meet with your constituents, I would love to come back, to come out and to talk within the communities. Now, I'm based in Arkansas, so you have to give me a little bit of notice to get here, so that I can get here and be here when you need me. But I'm only a phone call away. Each one of the representatives, each one of you have a folder with some of the information. And if you look in that, you know, the economic census, we just did the, for two thousand and twelve, which will come out in about another two years, and I think I owe Todd some information on when our new data is being released. But we have the different surveys, and that information is how you know what's going on. What is the growth within Blue Springs? It's amazing to me to see that a community that was once considered a bedroom community is now becoming a viable economic center. I mean, when you look at the numbers, and that makes a difference when you start planning what you're going to do within your city, when you start looking at what needs to be done, it's the census numbers that you need. We are the statistical bureau for the country, and this is how the money is divided up. And my director always says, "Explain it where people understand it." And I know in my household, we understand money. So, when the community looks at it, when they understand what their participation means to them individually and as a community, our numbers will go up, and the dollars will come into the community where they belong. I'm not going to take any more time, but I'll answer any questions that anyone may have for me.
Are there any questions from the council? Councilman Fowler?
Yeah, I did look through this real quick, but I didn't see your business card in here.
I will make sure that you get it, Representative.
Okay, all right. Very nice. Thank you.
Any others? Councilman Edmondson?
When you say you will come up from Arkansas, I mean, do you have a certain minimized group that you'd like to talk to, or you're willing to come up?
I will come up and talk to whoever you tell me to come and talk to, Representative. I am your specialist. I work for you. You just don't have to pay me.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Any other comments, questions?
CNN, thank you so much for commenting, sharing that information with us. And again, I think there's misconception out there. People think census is once every ten years.
Yes.
But you're working continuously on behalf of making sure we have the numbers, because I know those numbers reflect CDBG funds and everything else.
Roads, your roads, your hospital care, all of that is based upon the numbers, Representative.
Your Honor, there was one of the question I had, and through the year two thousand, we, and this was kind of a city estimate, too, but I thought we got some information from the Census Bureau. The City of Blue Springs, we moved our population up to like fifty-six thousand. By the time we did the census, it was only closer to like fifty-three thousand. So, obviously, that's why you do it every ten years, to make sure you know where it's at. Was there underreporting going on? Is there, we have to ask that question, but we don't really know the answer. So, and that's probably a detailed question for this community.
It's a detailed question that I don't have the answer to, but there was a program that is now ended. It was called Count Resolution, where you could question the Bureau. But again, a lot of the things that happened within the decennial census are based upon residents not responding. If they don't respond, we spend billions of dollars coming up to the decennial census. And that is why this program has come into play at this point, where we are now continuously in the field to help people understand. But people don't want you to know that they have extended families living within their households now. They don't want you to know that their in-laws are now living with them, and their children have come back home with their families. But we need to get it out there, to let them know that that information is important, because every person is worth, and it would take the administrator to be able to tell me what the dollars are for the households in Blue Springs, but every person is worth a certain amount of money to the city, from the oldest to the youngest. And they're worth that money every ten years. So, if they do not respond, and that's what my job is, to help people understand the legitimacy of their response. If they do not respond, and if you take, let's say they make, they're worth a hundred dollars a person, and a hundred people don't respond, for the next ten years, that's money that does not come into the community, that you can't use to offset some of the city debt, that you cannot use to put new programs into the schools and the community organizations. So, I can't answer the question on why the numbers went down, but I can say that if you allow me, I will come back and try to explain to the community why they should respond.
Any other comments, questions?
Again, thank you so much for coming, sharing it with us, and our meetings are televised, and hopefully, some of our bureau and audience are able to be more educated on the significance and importance of the census as well.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Safe travels.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next, we have a discussion on Tri-County Water Authority Expansion, CIP Project W A dash fifteen. Mr. Sandy.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers.
Happy to be here this evening. And while he's gearing up, you know, we're going to be on the thirty-first touring it for all the loads of you that can get away.
Thank you, sir.
To do that, I don't know how many people have signed up yet, but it's a good opportunity, because I'd like to be more educated on it.
The more the merrier. As usual, you might know that I like to start with a little bit of history. So, in two thousand and four, Blue Springs was beginning to grow once again, and we were looking at the annexed area to the south. During that period, we had some questions to answer as to how we were going to provide water for new residents in the area. At the time, we thought we were going to need about two, and I'm going to say this a lot, MGD, which means million gallons per day, to get us started. We initially started with Kansas City, who was our oldest and largest supplier, and talked to them, and discussions weren't fruitful. Second, we went to Independence and talked with them. They had some options, but their timelines were way off, and the dollar figures weren't looking very well either. We also heard from Tri-County Water Authority. They were entering into a contract with the City of Green Valley to provide them some more water. We had the opportunity to join them and enjoy economy of scale on the project to build what was eventually built in two thousand and five, an eighteen million gallon per day transmission main from their plant in Atherton to the tire road facility, which is on the outskirts of Blue Springs and Green Valley. You might recognize the red and white tower from the highway. Right next to it's a gray tank, which is a reservoir. Blue Springs owns four point eight million gallons of that tank and the pumping associated, and two million gallons of water. In two thousand and ten and two thousand and thirteen, the contracts for Kansas City and Independence Water were set to expire. And actually, Kansas City is expired. We are running on a provisional measure with them underneath our old agreement. Our old agreement is for seven and a half million gallons per day maximum and a minimum of one point eight seven five million gallons per day. We reaffirmed the Independence contract April first at the meeting. The only difference between their contract, which was for two point three eight million gallons, is we added a twenty-eight percent minimum to their contract. The Kansas City contract negotiations were taking much more time. Kansas City's model contract changed because we have multiple suppliers, which means that we could peek off of them, basically take water from them when we absolutely had to. For that reason, instead of having a twenty-five percent minimum, they proposed increasing our minimum to fifty percent, which doesn't sound terrible at this point, but as we move forward, you'll see the impacts. Blue Springs said, you know, "Let's take a better look at this and see if we can't find a better way to control our costs." This is a chart showing our two thousand and eleven capacity and rates, which is a little bit redundant. It shows that Kansas City was our major supplier at seven point five MGD with a minimum of eighteen, or one point eight seven five. Their price at the time was two dollars and fifty-four cents per thousand gallons. Independence, as I said, had two point three. They didn't have a minimum at the time. Their cost was a dollar forty-eight per thousand. Tri-County, which we newly met with and agreed to, was two, and their cost was a dollar sixty-four. Our total intake was ten point eight MGD. Now, where the minimums come into play is for winter usage, when people aren't watering their lawns, when they aren't doing a lot of cleaning outside. And that's where we get to the bottom part of the table, and you show, we see the one point eight seven five minimum there that we have to take or pay for. If we don't use it, we still pay for it. One point eight from City of Independence, and about nine hundred thousand gallons from Tri-County, for a total of about four point six. In your packet that you received, that actually said a dollar twenty-four, and I apologize, that was a misprint. It's actually a dollar ninety-four. So, we'll go through that right now. As you can see by this, this shows that Kansas City is by far the most expensive supplier we have. Tri-County is second, Independence is third. For those who like pictures better than numbers and tables, a graphical depiction. See how that distribution actually works out. Currently, for the year, we buy about forty-one percent of our water from Kansas City, forty percent from Independence, and nineteen percent from Tri-County. Kansas City's the most expensive, Tri-County's second, Independence is the least. The new KC minimum really set the stage to some serious negotiations, for lack of a better word. We went back to Kansas City, and we tried to work with them on the minimums. They weren't real conducive to that idea. We went to Independence and talked to them. They have just built, over the course of the last ten years, a new transmission line that follows the new road that comes down Jackson Drive, and could supply us with more water. They also built more treatment plant. So, we asked them about two million gallons or four million gallons of capacity. Even though that was built, they expected us to help pay for what was there. And for the two to four million gallons, they were twenty million plus dollars to make that work. So, then, we went to Tri-County, and we explored some options. In two thousand and eleven, we looked at two MGD. And the thought in two thousand and eleven was that we would take two MGD from Kansas City and give it to Tri-County, which would give us five point five for a maximum, reduce our minimum to two point seven five if they stayed at fifty percent, or would put us at one point four if we could negotiate the twenty-five percent back. As I said, the negotiations were difficult there. In July of two thousand and twelve, we decided that maybe our better bet would be to move that number from two to four MGD, further reducing our demand from Kansas City and their more expensive water. As we went through that, we also increased the price to thirteen million dollars for the project. Initially, it was seven point two for three, or for the two MGD. Then, we went to thirteen million in July. In order to demonstrate how this really works out, because this is kind of dry, if we left this with the Kansas City contract at seven point five with a minimum of three point seven five MGD, that means that we would have to take or pay, so we'd take eighty percent of our water from Kansas City water at the highest rate available. Tri-County and Independence would be the minor players at ten percent each. Logic dictates that there's got to be a better answer. So, as you recall, many of you were here last July, Dr. DeGrady showed a nice presentation with some graphs, and expressed his interest in moving ahead with the four MGD plan, and showed that it would pay for itself over time, and we would actually save a considerable amount of money. The reasoning for his argument was solid. Kansas City's rates keep going up. They have aging infrastructure. This is just a better plan. We're still trying to work with Kansas City to try to come to an end on the, or an answer on the fifty and twenty-five percent minimum. In the meantime, staff was working with Tri-County to come up with a contingency measure, to make sure that Blue Springs had enough water for fire protection and everything else during a transition. We were able to work with Tri-County and their member entities to come together with three point five MGD of available capacity from the other entities. I believe there are nine of them, and please don't ask me to name them, because I forgot to bring my list. But they were courteous enough to offer up that three point five to give us a contingency measure. The buyback on their side, the reason they did it, is it was capacity that they had planned for in two thousand and five, expecting growth. And as we all know, growth stagnated, hasn't occurred. They have extra water. They have debt. We entered into an agreement that said that we would pay them for anything that we took over our two point zero MGD maximum on our contract, for that extra, any of that extra three point five we used. We'd pay them the Kansas City rate. Now, currently at the time, our rate for Tri-County was a dollar seventy-six per thousand. They could take the extra funds that were above that and put towards their debt, to help their constituents as well, or their customers. To date, we've used some of that water. We haven't relied on it heavily, but we have used some. I don't want them to sound like they were fully benevolent. They did actually have a goodie in the negotiations. Okay. When we look at the current rates and limits, you can see that this is today. We have Kansas City at two dollars and ninety-one cents per thousand, Independence at a dollar sixty, and Tri-County at a dollar eighty-six. And then I show the Tri-County amendment at two dollars and ninety-one cents. The maximum is seven and a half for Kansas City, two point three for Independence, two for Tri-County, and then the three and a half for the temporary agreement. In April two thousand and thirteen, we took a ballot measure to the In April 2013, we took a ballot measure to the people, and it was affirmed overwhelmingly to allow the City of Blue Springs to join Tri-County Water Authority, which means not only may we work directly with contracts with Tri-County, it also gives us a seat on the board, something we don't have with Kansas City or Independence. We can help vote and control our own destiny and shape how the authority provides water and the fiscal responsibilities. Let me explain the CIP revisions, just because I know this has been probably confusing for those of you who have been following it in the CIP manuals. WA-15 was first put in in 2012 as a $7.2 million project, and that was for the original 2 MGD. That went in, in April. In July, we came back and talked to you about the 4 MGD option, which was 13 million, which you never saw a sheet that showed that number on there. In this year's 2013 CIP, when we did the review, we were still negotiating, we were still working on the numbers. Tri-County has been working with two other water districts to the south that are interested in also receiving water from them. However, they have some contract issues that they need to work out legally so they're not positive that they can participate or not. So, if you look in the document to date, you will see that WA-15 is listed for $21 million for 6 MGD. If you do the math as you go through there, the cost of, the economy of scale actually does come down. Okay. Looking at where we're at today, and this is just a snapshot of today, 2013, what really is the catch-all is the minimum. And as you can see, we've still got the 1.875 listed, the 2.91, and extrapolate the numbers out. So if you average the dollars that we spend per thousand for a low-flow period, they're about $2.26, $2.26 per thousand. If you look at the bottom, which is our new contract, the 50% minimum from Kansas City, that 3.75 MGD number, causes that number to jump to $2.68 per thousand. It's a 20% increase, 19%. Our goal is to find a more fiscally responsible answer. On low flow, what we'd like to see is something along the lines of us taking 50% from our least expensive supplier, Independence, 30% from Tri-County, our second, and then relying on Kansas City for the last 20%. To achieve this goal, we propose reducing Kansas City's contract actually to a total of 2 MGD. It's in the bottom. Sorry to make you bounce up and down here. But it's for 2, which will leave us a minimum of 1 MGD that we have to take from Kansas City. We'll be able to utilize the 2.3 from Independence and 900,000 from Tri-County for a minimum total of 4.2. At that rate, we actually drop our cost to $1.97 per thousand gallons. If you want to look at the summer capacity, and we max every one that we take water from, so we're pulling now 12.3 MGD, the price goes to $1.98, only because we were pulling that extra million gallons from Kansas City and we're tapping Tri-County for 8 MGD. So when you do the math, that's the way it comes together, which is much more affordable than the $2.26. Now, this isn't the whole story, because in order to get us there, we have to build some infrastructure at the Tri-County plant. Those tables are just a snapshot. They don't include anticipated rates over the next few years, which Kansas City has already said in a couple different studies, that they plan to do high single-digit to double-digit increases for the foreseeable future. They've received considerable pushback from wholesale customers, but it is what it is. Kansas City has a very old system, some of it's over a century old, but they're trying to maintain. Kansas City maintained their rates very low for a long time because rate increases were a no-no, and now they're trying to catch up. Kansas City and Independence have both been a little bit more proactive, I mean, Independence and Tri-County have both been a little bit proact, more proactive in giving small increases every so often to maintain their system. The total impact of all this, is where you really want to go, is in the next presentation, which is our water and sewer rate study, which will reaffirm that the recommendation is actually a good one. Another thing that I'd like to say is that some of the additional factors that we were considered, I talked about Kansas City's infrastructure, and I don't really, I'm not doing this to throw Kansas City under the bus. It's just fact, they have some old systems. Last summer, we were actually offline with Kansas City on two separate occasions because they have pumping facilities go down. Due to the fact that we have multiple suppliers, we were able to tap them for extra water, and the impact to our customers was we sent out a request for some voluntary rationing, which did have an effect, though really, everything went smoothly. We had plenty of water for fire protection. We had, unfortunately, a couple large fires right around the 4th of July that we were able to adequately supply without any real issue. Last year, our max day was 10 MGD. So, keep that in mind. Our staff recommendation is to enter into an agreement with Tri-County Water Authority to add 6 million gallons of additional water production at a total cost of $21 million. Including the debt service for the 6 MGD expansion, water rates for Blue Springs customers will remain near the lowest in the area. I believe when you look at the chart, we will be the second from the bottom. With that, any questions?
Any questions? I'm not at all. So we go to 6 MGD from Tri-County. We reduce Kansas City's down to 1 or 2?
They'd actually reduce us to 2, and our total from Tri-County will be 8.
Okay.
And then Kansas City will remain at 2.
Yeah, because as I look at those Kansas City rates, you're not throwing them under the bus, they threw us under the bus with those kind of numbers.
Councilman Fowler and Councilman Lewis.
Yeah, with Kansas City, you say, hey, you know, they're getting us into this situation because they keep raising the minimum that we have to buy from them. But if we go with alternative third source, how does, how do we get that minimum? How come they're willing to let that minimum go down for us to still do business with them?
They intend to take the 5.5 MGD that we're going to give up and sell to other people.
So therefore they're going to lower that minimum?
Yes, because their anticipation is that 5.5 will be used on a more regular basis. We tend to peek off of them now because they are our most expensive, and they know that.
Okay.
And so then they'll be able to sell that to point-sell.
Okay, okay.
I think I heard you touch on it, but I didn't get my question answered fully as far as Independence goes. Was there any negotiation in raising our maximum with them since they're our lowest rate right now?
No, we did. And that was when I was talking about the transmission main that came down by Independence Center. And we could do that. The problem was that the cost for the infrastructure for the transmission main and the additional plant capacity that they built, that we would basically have to buy from them, was 20-plus million dollars.
Okay. So they would want us to help pay for the infrastructure in addition to the regulars?
Correct, because they built it assuming people would need it and they could sell it.
Okay.
And then they also need to replace that for their customers.
So was $20 million that number that they wanted us to?
It was a rough estimate, and it was 20-plus.
Okay.
They just said it would be over $20 million, but we didn't. When we heard that number, we knew that at that time, we had the transmission main that we'd already constructed was in place. With Tri-County, all we were going to need to do was to build more capacity at the plant and possibly add a couple pumps at the facility on tire road.
So they haven't indicated, at least at this point, that they're going to allow us to raise that maximum unless we help contribute to the infrastructure?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. One else? Mr. Johnson?
Your Honor, I appreciate the council's patience as we work through this very detailed information. Where we're headed here is that Chris has done a really good job, and his whole team, of trying to provide our residents with the best water and sewer rate structure really that we have, to be very consistent, reliable, and affordable. The presentation and information that Chris has just given you and the cost has been folded into the next presentation. This is your setup, Julie. Julie Carmichael does really good work for us, and every three years, you allow us to do an updated water and sewer rate model. The intent there is to keep our rates really to manage any major fluctuations in those rates over time, and to try to give our users, approximately 20,000 accounts, some consistency and really help them better manage what's going on in the city with our rates. So she's going to give you a very good presentation. The information that Chris provided is in that, the numbers, the data, and then hopefully, if you are in agreement and support what you're being presented tonight, we'll ask you to consider approving two ordinances that would establish our water and sewer rates that we'll then fold into the budget that we're giving to you on August 1st. Thank you, Your Honor.
Julie?
Good evening. My name's Julie Carmichael. This is our, I have to count, 1, 2, 3, 4th water and sewer rate study for the City of Blue Springs. We've been in front of you every time. The conclusion of what you're going to see tonight is that in order to have an equitable increase across all customer classes and ensure fund balances that are prudent, we are looking at combined annual increases of somewhere between 5% to 6% for water and sewer bills over the next five years. 80% of your customers are going to pay $1.50 or less per month as a result of that increase. And we structure this so that your small issues or your fixed income users will have a smaller impact. So we're very cognizant of the minimum fee as opposed to the variable rate, and we try to protect those smaller fixed income users. The goal of the model is to generate sufficient operating revenues to maintain prudent levels of fiscal health. Right now, the model is recommending a 10% annual increase in water revenue and 2% annual increases in sewer. Combined bills, again, though, for those two separate increases is 5% to 6%, and that allows us forecasted fund balances to be no less than 40% of total expenditures, which has been a goal since 2003. All costs of doing business are recovered. There's a justifiable reimbursement to the general fund departments who support water and sewer activities, and there's a separate charge to Grain Valley for the sewer services provided them. They have paid $1.23 per thousand since 2010. They haven't had an increase. This model is recommending a 5% increase in their, in what they pay, starting, not this coming fiscal year, but next year, to $1.29. The sewer, water and sewer rate model was first developed in 2003. It forecasts all costs and revenues over a five-year time period. It calculates the rates that need to be assessed to generate that, and staff updates it every two to three years. So in 2004, staff wanted a residential tier structure that would encourage water conservation. So residents at higher levels of water usage pay a higher rate. Because the rates had not been increased for a long time, in 2004 and '05, we had to have significant rate increases, 15% and 20%. But then as a result of a model that's updated every two years, most of the model, most of the rate increases since 2005 have been pretty nominal, 3, 1.5, 2% increases, and that's much better, protects your consumers from really large and abrupt increases. So tonight, we're going to look at the model results for 2013 and look a little bit at water consumption, the financial health of the funds, and then comparing Blue Springs to area cities. We've always compared to eight cities, and we've done the same again tonight. So this is all combined expenditures for the five-year period water and sewer. The highlight here is to see that personnel, operating and general fund transfer, your operating costs, and purchased water and sewer, and then capital and debt, your more fixed costs, are fairly well distributed. It's about a third, a third, and a third. So you're not overly leveraged on fixed costs. Your overhead is very reasonable. Purchased water and purchased sewer are somewhat out of your hands, and those pie slices have Combined revenues for your water and sewer funds, water is more significant than sewer. We have a new category in this model that we've not had in prior models, and that's your sewer special assessments. They have become a significant piece of the pie. Grain Valley service charges also significant, and then of course, connection fees and your This shows a distribution of your customers and your consumption. So, about 90% of your customers are residential, but they only consume about 77% of your water. What that tells you is you have a lot of small, a small amount of commercial customers consuming a fairly significant amount of water. And staff watches that because when you've got customers like that, they can make a big difference in your overall if all of a sudden, something happens with their consumption. This says 2012, but if you go all the way back to 2002, those ratios are virtually the same. This distribution has not changed in the last 10 years. This is a new analysis we did this year. This shows in inches, total rainfall for Blue Springs. And you can see we have assessed whether or not a year was kind of average, wet or dry, there on the bottom. I want to point out two things for you to keep in mind before we go to the next slide. 2005 and 2008 and '09 were very similarly wet years, and 2002 and 2012 were very similarly dry years. We would expect that water consumption is going to rise and fall with changes in weather pattern, one of them being rainfall, the other being temperature. So, as I told staff, that's what makes your job so hard, because to predict a good water and sewer rate study, you need to be good weather forecasters. So you will see in 2002, a very dry year with the same amount of rainfall as 2012, but a much different level of consumption. And in 2005, compared to '08 and '09, again, similarly wet years, but very different patterns of consumption. What we finally have now is enough data to really test whether or not the graduated tiers implemented in 2003 for water conservation worked. And I think it's pretty clear it has. Average annual consumption is definitely downward. It does move with weather patterns, but it's much lower than it was prior to when you implemented those tiers. There's other things going on there to promote that conservation, people's understanding and sensibilities about that in general, low-flow toilets and the economy, but overall, I think there's enough of a 10-year trend data now to be able to say your goal of water conservation worked. Reserves as a percent of expenditures in both of the funds has been forecasted to remain at 40%. So that's our goal, and then we set the rates based on that. So here are the water, residential water and sewer rates for 2014 compared to 2013. Tier 1 is highlighted. That is 80% of your residential customers fall in that tier. So they're going to see about $1.50 combined increase, about a 4% increase in their bill. Graphically, again, 81% of your residential customers. Graphically, again, 81% of your residential customers compared to the bills in these eight other cities, they are second from the bottom. They're well below the eight-city average, and this assumes the rate increase recommended for 2014, but the current rates of these cities today, and many of them are also considering rate increases in 2014. Commercial, most of your commercial customers fall in tier one. They're going to see about a 76 cent increase in their total bills, or 3%. And those 65% of your commercial customers fall on the bottom compared to the other eight cities and well below the average. So part of the reason why the water fund requires such significant 10% increases like we haven't seen or had to recommend since 2004 is because these purchased rate, water rates have gone up so significantly in the last three years, but we kept the rates at the recommended 3%. So when you look at the water fund balance, there's like this little nice marching downward. So we need to stop that, and the 10% increases is what's necessary to do that. Do you have questions?
Any questions for Mr. Carmichael? Yes, Your Honor, thank you.
Nice presentation, thank you. The, back on one of the slides, you did show that we're getting closer to the 40% reserve. Okay. So I see that. But then there's also that 9% that you showed, the slice of the pie, that goes to general fund transfer. Could you explain that one?
So the 9% of the pie is actually a general fund charge to the water and sewer funds, which is a calculation that's equal to 17% of operating costs. So it's an overhead cost to offset the cost within the general fund of servicing those enterprise funds for general city functions, for the city attorney, for the finance department, for, you know, anything that is not directly paid for out of those funds but are being supported by those funds. Most cities will have an overhead charge of anywhere between 15% and 25%. Blue Springs has done an analysis, a detailed analysis of what those actual expenses are and determined that that 17% is a pretty fair representation of what those costs would be. Grain Valley gets charged that same 17% overhead in calculating their fee. So it's a transfer out of those funds to the general fund every year, and you'll see that in the budget as a line item.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? Saying none, thank you much for your presentation. That brings us to section 4261. Would you like to introduce it?
I'll introduce it, Your Honor. First reading of Bill number 4261 and ordinance amending section 705130 to set new sewer rates for fiscal years 2013 through '14, fiscal years 2014 through '15, and fiscal year 2015 through '16.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second. The second?
Second.
Question? Councilman Fowler?
Yes, Your Honor. The, I guess, there's actually two questions. On the rates, there is, on the staff report there, there is an administrative charge of $6.30, one for water, and $6.50 current rate for sewer. And those administrative charges, what are those about? And, go ahead.
Those are the base charges that are the minimum charge every month. So if you had no water usage or no sewer usage, you would get that minimum charge. We have to set that charge to cover our fixed costs, like our debt service and salaries and other costs that the city has regardless of if anybody buys any water or uses any sewer services. So that, those fees cover those expenses.
That's the minimum, okay. All right, and the second thing, this is more of a risk type. Whenever you have collections from a large number of people, you're always at risk of not collecting some of that money, okay? And we have, in our community, a higher-than-normal risk with the NID down south, and do these rates reflect that? What is our risk versus all that?
Because there can be a delay in collecting the assessments, up to three years on the NID assessments, the rate model's pretty conservative in that we expect in establishing the rates that our collection percentage would be 70% each year. So for these next three years, that's going to give us time to evaluate once a property goes three years without paying, how it goes to the county for land sale, how that may end up at the land bank if it does, and so we've kept those collection percentages pretty conservative in the model. And even keeping those conservative, we're able to do 2% increases in sewer fund. So it's not affecting the rates because of those collection percentages.
So whereas back a number of years ago, that reserve may have been 80%, and now it's closer to 40%, that looked like we were prepared to handle if a lot of people didn't pay their bill, but now we're running more risk than...
Yeah, that question came up when we were reviewing the model because it's like, why are, we're getting, we're running down our reserves while we look at that, and Julie would attest to, we went back and looked at our previous rate studies, and those graphs for fund balance also look like that because the rate model is very conservative. And so we are planning for worst case, what would be, we have to protect that 40%, but each year when you plug in those actuals, we don't ever get down to that 40%.
Okay. So even if nobody pays your bill down there, this looks like we're locked into these rates for the next three years, and that's just, that's the worst case of the worst case?
That's what we're planning, unless something comes up that we didn't forecast in the model. And the rate model covers a five-year period, but we only adopt rates for three years, which is the enterprise revenue policy that's included in the budget. So when we look at all these things, we're looking out and forecasting five years, but we're only requesting rate adjustments for three years.
Okay, all right. Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All the same sign?
Second reading of Bill number 4261 and ordinance amending section 705130 to set new sewer rates for fiscal years 2013 through '14, fiscal year 2014 through '15, and fiscal year 2015 through '16.
Move the bill be approved on its second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
The second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Quabell?
Aye.
Councilman Levesey?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4440.
Next, we have introduction reading of Bill 4262.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor. First reading of Bill number 4262 and ordinance amending section 705010 to set new water rates for fiscal year 2013 through '14, fiscal year 2014 through '15, and fiscal year 2015 through '16.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second. The second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All the same sign?
Second reading of Bill number 4262 and ordinance amending section 705010 to set new water rates for fiscal year 2013 through '14, fiscal year 2014 through '15, and fiscal year 2015 through '16.
Move the bill be approved on its second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
The second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Quabell?
Aye.
Councilman Levesey?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4441.
Next, we have a presentation of Prairie Township Fire Protection District. Chairman Harry Clayne, would you come up, please? Welcome.
Thank you. It's good to see most of you. I don't, I don't know a few. I don't know Edmondson, and I don't know Chris Levesey. It's good to see you. I'm going to, what I'd like to cover is a little bit about us, considering I, this is my first time here, and I don't know if anybody before me ever came here to talk to you, and until maybe two years ago, I'm not sure anybody came down to us to talk to us. So I think I'll, I'll just cover a few items that we, that you may know and you may not know about us, as we've been going after this for some time now to try and get this resolved. We have 36 square miles. We go from Wiggott Road in the north to the Cass County line in the south. On the east, we have Long Island, Lone Jack. In the west, we have Lee Summit, James A. Reed, and Jacomo that kind of are our boundaries. Three main sections we have, south of 50 Highway, 50 to Colburn Road, north of Colburn Road. All in our, and they all have different challenges that they dictate. We have accrual five on duty every day, 365 days a year. Medics are part-time in our district. We have a pool of 17, and they come from a lot of other areas, Lee Summit, CJC, even Alatha. We have, and those people, through osmosis, what they give to our firefighters has been terrific for us because these are people that are really qualified in what they do, so they really close that gap for us. We utilize a medic on both the ambulance and the pumper, so we have two on duty every day. We've worked to that, real hard to get to that point. Our equipment, we have two pumppers. One is about a year old, and it has foam as well as water. It's pretty well state-of-the-art for us. We have two rescue ambulances. One's the primary, an older one is the backup. We have a tanker, a brush truck, and a few chief vehicles. The tanker is essential for where most of our district is. Two-thirds of our district is south of Colburn Road and hydrants, and I was really glad to hear some of these water, water issues. I served on a board, a water district board at one time, and it surprises me the rates, how they went from Kansas City was the cheapest, but the infrastructure they have, that's, I think that's why the rates are there. So that's not what I'm here for. The coverage, we have mutual aid with Lone Jack, Pleasant Hill, Lee Summit, and CJC. That's regular mutual aid. We have auto mutual aid with Lake La Jolla, and that's very important for the people up here. We're physically sound with our resources and reserves. We've done a good job of maintaining our money, keeping it where it ought to be. We have had very little increases. The levy stays basically the same for the people in our area. The goals are simple. We're trying to improve the service to all areas and keep going up and not be complacent and let it sit where it's at. We're trying to prepare for the future, and that, I'm trying to respond to some of the things that were in your letter that came to us in last year. We do a periodic review to see where we're at, and I think I've shared this with some of the people before. We get the calls from Lee Summit that tells us how many. There's, we have two different areas that we have to deal with, and I'll get to that in a minute, but for the most part, Lee Summit will give us all the data to tell us where the calls are at, how many, is there any trends? And we look at it, and I look at that very carefully because that's something I did in my career once in the Air Force. So I look at those kind of trends all the time to see where we're at and should we take any kind of action. Where the, and the type, whether they were ambulance or they were fire. The water improvements, and I don't know if this pertinent or not, I didn't know if the figures you were talking, oh, she's gone. Those people are gone. If Water District 13 is included in those things they were talking about or not?
Yes.
Okay, good, thank you. And I know they are, they are a tri-count customer, correct? Thank you. I look at that. I get, I get information from that board that tells me how many hookups they had, and I can tell you there was 375 from 2005 to 2012. That's how many. That gives us an idea how many homes are in there. Water District 13 goes way up, catches Eagles Ridge, kind of jogs around a little bit, and I believe all you people are in Blue Springs, correct? Thank you. Just trying to make sure I got it all right here. One of the important things is hydrants. Whether you have hydrants or you don't have hydrants. Up here, you have hydrants. Where I'm at, I'm on a three-inch water line. We have no hydrants. We have other challenges to drafting a pond, if you will, things like that. There are some areas of our district that have hydrants that don't have 1,000 gallons per minute, and that's, that's what you need to suppress fire. Water District 13 has a lot of them in a lot of areas. For your sake, it's not in your, in Chapman Farms area. They're all 12-inch water lines, so they have what they need. I also look and reexamine this all the time, the road improvements. It wasn't that long ago that the road coming from our area coming up to CBS or Walgreens, where I do a lot of shopping up this way, was very narrow. Now we have, it's improved, and our biggest hassle coming from our station to the area in question that we're all here for is when we come down off of Milton Thompson, we've got the little connection that puts us on Seven Highway. Then we've got pretty much a straight shot. Versus if you go to south of 50 Highway, you've got a NASCAR track to go across a couple times a day, and it's very dangerous. That's probably the biggest safety thing we have in the whole area, and we're working with MoDOT and Lee Summit and everything to try and correct this. We look at what improvements we need to make in our medical side. We look at what improvements we need on the equipment for fire. The new pumper we have gives us a little bit more flexibility with foam and everything to help out. The mutual aid agreements, this, that's what we work on all the time. Having those solid relationships with these groups covers the areas. It's about coverage, in my estimation. How many, how many areas can you cover safely for everybody? The kind we have that we need here, it's mutual aid now. So in the past, what we've done, the day that they came into our station and asked for automatic mutual aid, and we discussed everything, was, at that time, we were good with the coverage we had. We had Lake La Jolla and us both running to the, to the area up here. So we were good then, we're good today, and we will be good in the future, no matter what it takes. We want to get this done. When they came to us, I, I understand their issues because they're on the northern edge of a boundary, and the same would be for Cass County line, those people down there, that it's a little bit more rural out there, so it's not as, not as magnified. But for this area, being this close is important, so having that mutual aid is what we need. Now personally, I don't even think we need an automatic mutual aid. I think the two fire districts could just say, "We need help, we'll come. If we need help, we'll call you, you come." It should be that simple to me. But if we can't get to that point, then the automatic mutual aid will work good. What we have with La Jolla, you know, and I remember when we talked, Mr. Johnson, we were talking about the various districts, districts of districts. They were said a long time ago, school districts. And you joked with me, you said, "Well, we're good with the Lee Summit School District because we're friends." Well, we want to be friends with everybody, too. I'm in the Lee Summit School District. You have Water District 13, you've got that own school district. You have all them things that are getting in the way. The answer would be if you had your own fire department, you wouldn't have this. You can't afford to have a fire department for the same reason we can't build another station in your area right now. The numbers aren't there. We have 400 calls a year. It hasn't changed. To date in this year, we've had 239. We've had, any wood here, no structure fires in this area up here, north of Colburn Road in the last year and a half. So when we make our assessments on what we need to do, that's what we look at. So down the road for this area, when the numbers are there, if the dreaded Walmart ever comes, like everybody hopes it will come, and I do, too, if it comes and the numbers start to rise, development pays for development. That's the way it works with cities. That's the way it works for everybody. We will be ready. We've looked at, and I think we discussed this when we met with you, Mayor and Mr. Johnson, we've looked at buying land, and there's a couple areas that look pretty good for us. The kicker is the sewer taxes there. If we buy the land and just hold it, we could afford that. We've got enough money to buy some land somewhere, providing that it all goes through and everybody's happy with it. A lot of times, residents don't get happy with fire, just stations right in their backyard. But if that all went through, that'd be fine. And then when the time came, we'd build a station and we'd have it. But just sitting there, holding the land, we can't just put a station there because the cost is the manpower. It's, it's probably, we have a $1.3 million budget. It probably goes to just over $950,000 for just personnel. It doesn't leave you a whole lot of wiggle room in there to do anything else. So what I, we went through, for me, a horrible last couple of years trying to get to this point. point. It's like a cat and mouse game for me, and it's tough for all of us. We need this agreement. We've sat down, and I owe a lot of credit to Councilman Cobell who stepped aside from the city and moderated us and CJC sitting down and talking. And I want to address something that probably our people would say I should have stayed away from tonight, but we went to an agreement that sounded pretty good from Chief Westerman. He said something, I listened, I calculated my mind, and I said, "Okay." And that was with the boundary of Colburn Road. So our chief agreed with it that day, but he had some reservations. The other two council members said, "No." When we left his office, what I tried to emphasize was, "I'm only one of three people. We all have to vote, just like you all have to vote." They said, "Absolutely not. Wyatt Road is the right area because it should be an equal, fairly equal distance both ways." Mutual aid means you help each other. The only two issues I had with the first proposal was Colburn Road and the fact that there was nothing for us to cross over and help if they needed help. We just had, the only, I should say, the only fire call our people have come up to and worked on in the last six months was actually on across the line over between, up to Marlin School Road, somewhere in there, I think that's where it was, and they came and responded. We need this thing to get through for their sake. That's all that they wanted, correct? Thank you. I would hope that if you people are satisfied, and I'm not sure why you have to be satisfied for them to be, CJC to be satisfied, but that's why I'm here. That's the main reason I'm here, and if you have any questions, I'll be glad to go through them. What I will not do is I'm not going to complain about anything that they ever do, and I don't really want to talk about any incidents in the past because with any organization, if you have something that, we could debate whether we did right or did wrong, or they did right or did wrong, we just learn from it, turn negative to a positive and move on. That's the way we should operate. So is there any questions?
Okay, Mr. McLean, it stands right now, both boards, CJC and Prairie Township, sign a automatic aid agreement, and the boundaries goes to Wyatt Road.
Is that?
And am I understanding that correctly?
No, they have not signed it yet.
Oh, they have not signed theirs yet?
No.
They're waiting until after this presentation to get the reaction from us before they sign theirs?
That is correct, Mayor.
Okay. Yours is signed?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Want to make sure everybody's on the same page and everybody understands what we're doing.
Okay. Let's open it up to the council. You have any questions of Mr. McLean, Councilman Fowler?
All right. Questions, comments? First of all, thank you for your service and appreciate you coming tonight. I kind of want to, for the people that may be listening to this, maybe they don't understand this particular issue, so I want to kind of give it a frame of reference for that audience that may be hearing this tonight, hearing about firefighting and things like that in the city of Blue Springs. They may think it applies to them, but it really depends on where they live and where their property is at, so. Most people, when they think of fire departments, they think of like Kansas City, Independence Lee Summit, even Lake Lauta Wana, Pleasant Hill. Those cities, as they, as their boundaries move, their fire department does because it's a municipal fire department. Blue Springs doesn't have one of those. Therefore, if a Blue Springs resident has to work through an elected official just like yourself, and not a municipal city councilman, but actually a fire district representative such as yourself, matter of fact, the citizen's sitting in the back, you represent them in the fire district. So you're one elected official up here, giving a presentation for your fire district to the city council, who is really not, doesn't have the authority at the moment to, you know, control Blue Springs firefighting and ambulance service currently. We have the state authority to step in and do that for our citizens, but we have not enacted to take over fire and ambulance service for our citizens, I guess. You know, so we're telling you that obviously there's some citizens down there that you represent, that are your citizens too, but that have concerns, and we want the two fire districts working together.
Exactly.
Okay? And to make it really simple, what, you know, people know they pay nine-one-one taxes. All they want to know is who, the professionals that are there and available to respond, whoever can respond fastest, respond. They don't really like to hear that, you know, the fourth station, because that's the one they live in, they have to wait for the fourth station to act, they want emergency response. That's why they called nine-one-one and the dispatch service to begin with. So if you live down south, this, you know, south of, and in the Prairie Township Fire District, those citizens are of concern, and I understand this is progress going to Wyatt Road today, but, you know, there's, the people that live on the south side of Wyatt are just as important and deserve the same, when they pick up a nine-one-one call and dial nine-one-one, they deserve the professionals that's available the quickest to get there.
They do, and we've looked at that, and what we believe is that with Lauta Wana's assistance here...
I'm all for Lauta Wana too, if they can get there.
Right. They probably would beat us there to that area between Wyatt and Colburn because they just got a real short response to get there, and that's what's important. Who gets there first doesn't matter, and...
Well, it matters the person there. I mean, they...
No, no, no. I mean, as far as the districts, if someone gets there and helps people...
Oh, for what district they're from, you're right. It doesn't really matter to the person that wants professionals there. They want them there, and what's on the side of the van is secondary. They all appreciate the service that you provide, but, you know, we understand that you need to grow financially before you can build a station closer to those households. And I think that's what you've been saying.
We do, and, you know, we've been serving this district for lord knows how long. It goes way back when they did the fire district lines years ago. It's our responsibility. We take it serious. We feel that we cover it adequately. But this is what they want, and when they came to us, that's what we wanted to give them. It was a very congenial meeting. You were there.
Mm-hmm.
You were there that night. But the road has had so many twists in it to get here, and the latest one was, we had some issues over the amount of equipment that would come, that they wanted to send or whatever, and so we sat down as the other members and the chief, and we worked that out that, "Send whatever you want." I was for that all along, as I think Councilman Cobell knows. The chief was, his only issue was, if you're spreading yourself, if this is an automatic thing and you don't want to take away from other areas that may have fires at the same time. You know, the one thing I would tell everybody, and I know I told those people over and over that night, I call it a, I don't want to say what I normally call it, it's a stretch every, it's a stretch every time there's a fire that happens. We don't have the classic situation where everybody's sitting in their station, ready to run out and go respond. That may happen, but it may not. There may be nobody. There may be nobody on Adams Dairy, and maybe nobody on Forty Highway, or Prairie Township, or Lauta Wana for that matter. And then it's going to be, whoop, what's the dispatchers do on the next steps? Is it Lee Summit? Is it Sny Valley? Is it somebody? Somebody's going to come. You just, that all plays into this thing. But we increase our odds with these kind of things. It's absolutely essential that we have these mutual aid agreements, and that's why we set them up that way.
Yep. Another comment, and I want to let you know that after this, there's a visitor session. I think some of the, some of your actual constituents may come and talk during that, so I invite you to stick around for that. But also, at least from my opinion, this is progress, and I'm thankful that we're getting progress. I've heard the years of reciprocity and why we couldn't do it from that angle. I'm not sure, you know, Wyatt can't go to Colburn today, but I want to say that in my book and the citizens that live, you know, to the south of Wyatt, it's still an open issue, and it's, and more progress needs to happen in the future.
Well, I agree with that, and I, you know, if there's any holdup in this process from back when we first met in his office, I got to take the hit for it because I was the one that said, "Well, I'll compromise. I'll say yes." I knew in my heart, I didn't think it needed to go there. It needed to go to Wyatt Road, and I do believe that truly. But under the conditions we talked about, it worked for me, and I said that. Again, I was outvoted. It's the people that they are, they have their feelings and their beliefs. So as far as building a station in the future, we're ready to be, when that time comes, we'll be there and we'll build that. It's our responsibility. We've never shunned away from doing it. It's just, you can't do it now. It just makes no sense. We'd sit there with people sitting in a station soaking up money like crazy, and the residents would have to increase their levy dramatically to get to, it just about doubles your budget to do it.
And you said your annual budget's like one and, one and a half million a year?
One and a half million.
Wow. The levy increases for CJC is going to be more than that. That's, that they proposed. If I double that in just an increase...
Well, I looked at what they, I looked at Chief Westerman's presentation. If I was in Blue Springs, I'd vote for that. I truly would because that's a very good, you made a good presentation.
And still, one of the things that's not, or that's still, let me get this right, this just pertains to fire service. Ambulance service, there is no change, so the residents that are here tonight, their ambulance service is Prairie Township and not, the first responder will not be CJC even though they maybe have an ambulance closer.
That's true, and that was at Chief Westerman's request, so...
Any other questions?
Uh, your honor?
Yes?
Yeah, I have a couple of things that I wanted to clarify. I know that there were issues with the number of units, and so that is not an issue anymore, correct?
No, it's not an issue.
Because I know that CJC has their own requirements on what they need and must send to a call. I also would like to know, I know it's been requested that a long-range plan be shared. Is there a long-range plan that can be shared as far as where Prairie intends to be and do to protect the people? Right now, as Councilman Fowler said, you know, it's hard pressed to say, "Well, you live on the south side of Wyatt, so you don't get the same protection, the same advantages of people on the north side." So where does Prairie, where does Prairie District plan on being five years from now? Is there anything concrete?
Well, that's, we will, when the numbers are there, we'll build a station up here somewhere, be it Wyatt Road, be it Cowherd Road. I'm not sure where it'll be because it depends on where we can get the land and how all that works out. If we could buy the land today, like I said before, we'd do it, but the sewer tax, and I don't believe you have a waiver in your thing with sewer tax, do you, for...
The NID now.
So we expect to, this is all economy-driven to me. I don't know, and when the economy improves, and we see the numbers start to rise, and not only that, but when we see the amount of homes, it just keeps trickling up, it'll, we'll get to that point, and we'll be, we look at this periodically. I look at it probably a couple of times a year. Officially, we look at it once a year, and we look at the numbers, and the numbers are the same. They haven't changed in years, so...
Councilman Culpepper, what I see as the struggle with that is, is that their district continues to be reduced in size as Lee Summit grows, as Pleasant Hill grows, as Lake Lauta Wana grows. They're getting smaller. Blue Springs is really their opportunity for growth and to get some, I mean, it's one of their bigger areas of opportunity for growth to where they can get some taxes to building another station, right?
I don't disagree with that, but I think that as any good business, you need to have a business plan. So that's where I'm, what I'm looking at. I do think this is a step in the right direction. I agree, it's not a, it's not a permanent solution. It's a step in the right direction now. The people on the south side of Lake Village, the people in Edgewood, they need that protection now, and CJC is a closer fire station for them, particularly those people on the south side of Lake Village actually, because you can't get to them, they're all wrapped up inside that subdivision. So I see this as a start.
It is, and like I said, boundaries are boundaries, you know. I think I shared with some of the people along the way that, I worked for the state of Missouri after I got out of the Air Force, and I worked on Sixty-third Street where there was a police station literally right across the street, and they were not the servicing police station for where we were at, and we had issues that every day made you, you didn't know. Thirty-first Street is where the police station was for that. It happens. It happens everywhere that you have a boundary somewhere. Somebody's going to be in that situation. So, you know, it is what it is. I believe we're good for today, where our immediate plans are to just keep getting better. Our response times are roughly eight minutes from there to this area up here. I just looked at a video one of the medics did going from Prairie all the way up there on a call, went up there, and it was seven minutes and fifty-four seconds, and he had it right on. I watched the whole thing the whole time. So we do look at that. We don't take nothing for granted that, you know, one day if somebody tells me the economy got better and all of a sudden we're behind the power curve. We're not going to be behind the power curve. We'll be ready. We felt we were ready, and when they came to us in two thousand and eleven, we are today and will be in the future. And the one thing, the last thing I'd like to leave with you is, we didn't ask CJC to bail us out of anything. We had it covered to begin with, so we, this was for the citizens. That's what we sat down that night and talked about.
Well, and that's why we're asking the questions, because we represent the, Councilman Fowler and I in particular, and this whole council represents those, the residents in the city, and we want to make sure that they have the adequate and better-than-adequate protection. The reports that I have looked at show considerably more than eight minutes in response time. So we need to make sure that we can get them the protection that they deserve as residents or that anyone deserves for that matter.
Yeah, and I'd be glad to sit down and we could go over them, them numbers.
I do have one other question, though. On this mutual aid automatic, this is an addendum, correct, because it's the automatic, is there a timeframe on this?
You mean how long we'll do it?
Yeah, a sunset of any sort, built in?
Well, I would say that we...
I'm curious, I know, had heard it.
I think we should come back in a year and examine and see how we've done.
Is that written into it? I'm curious.
I don't know if it was in the latest thing or not.
I didn't see it, so...
You know, we hustle along trying to get the last thing there that said the amount of equipment that they wanted to send. We were just a little bit at odds there with it. We thought we had it right, we didn't have it right, and we got it to them that day, and we might not have had it in there. We can, we can work that out. You know, two chiefs ought to be able to work that out, good lord. But I would tell you that we'd like to come back in a year and say, "How's it going? How are we doing?" Look at the numbers to see if they've grown any, see if where we're at with the amount of people and everything.
Well, I'm glad we're getting this far, and I appreciate all the efforts.
I certainly applaud what is, what is taking place, that we have some coverage. Wyatt Road, I prefer you go to Colburn Road too, but that's not in, those are not in the cards right now. Response times also affect people's insurance rates, and I would like all the citizens of Blue Springs to enjoy the best insurance rates they could possibly have. I believe my letter to you and your board asked for a long-term plan, and I would like to see that, not necessarily a year from now, because I think it's important that we know where we're going. You know, one of the things that years and years ago, there were just a lot of school districts, and I think I even suggested this in my letter.
No.
Because of economy of scale, they couldn't exist anymore. So what did they do? They came up with consolidation. They consolidated. I mean, I just throw that out as food for thought.
I understand, and I can tell you that the people south of Colburn Road will never agree to that, and I've already had many constituents tell me that, so...
It's been voted on before, hasn't it, at the ballot? Wasn't there a consolidation election back in the year, the year two thousand or so? A proposal?
Not to Lauta Wana.
Oh, that was just with Lauta Wana?
Lauta Wana, yeah.
Okay.
It was Lauta Wana, not the Prairie.
Okay, all right.
But anyway, I think we just need to look at all the options we possibly can because the idea is to serve the people the very best that we can. Now, let me ask one other question that has, does not have anything to do with your automatic aid for fire, but from an ambulance, your response time's good for ambulance service to that service area? And you do have five... And you do have five people, you said, on duty?
With two medics, yeah.
Now, we're going to Wyatt Road, and the city of Blue Springs, we still, we go all the way to Colburn. Now, what's your agreement with Ladawanna? Because you talked about the winding roads coming down Milton Thompson. That's one of the problems that you have, and Ladawanna is a lot closer to those new houses that are still being built today in Chapman Farms.
Our agreement with Lake Ladawanna Fire District is, it's automatic for, if they have, if there's a 911 call for a structured fire anywhere in their district, we run with them. But the dispatch comes to both of us and we run it. If it's in Prairie Township's area, anywhere in Prairie Township, they will run it without...
Yeah, that's the part I'm interested in.
It's, that's why we said we had it covered to all the way to Leggitt Road, all along.
And yours is a written document, or is it just a handshake or just a gentleman's agreement?
It was, we endorsed it, so it should be written all along.
I mean, I'm talking about Ladawanna for covering areas up to Wyatt Road.
And their board, because I made sure that their board concurred with it. We can't just make an agreement like that between two chiefs.
Well, we haven't had any fires in Chana. I pray to God we don't have any fires.
I am with you.
We don't have any, we have to use it, but you never know when things would happen, and I just want to make sure that they have good coverage too. Any other questions?
Yes, Your Honor. Just want to make a couple of statements. I want to thank Harry and his board and Central Jackson County Fire Protection District and their board for taking the time to come up and meet with me and to work on this issue. I appreciate the time that we've spent, and it's been fairly significant. It was more than just the meeting in my office. We've all spent quite a bit of time on the phone with each other, talking about the various different difficulties, and I think we've learned a lot of things in the process. And I think we've, my hope is that we will work to all get to know each other better than we did before this process began, and that the two fire districts will spend some time together in the future. And I know that we've all kind of talked about the review of this in about a year, and I hope that everybody will show up in a year and we'll have that discussion as well. I want to encourage my colleagues on the council to help send a message to Central Jackson County Fire Protection District, because I know they're waiting for this answer, is that the Wyatt Road boundary is okay at this time so that we can move forward with this agreement. And I think that's very important for the residents who are sitting back here who've been waiting, waiting for this agreement to get done. And I agree with, I concur with what everybody said about, we still have work to do, but I think, you know, we've got some trust and getting to know each other issues to work on over the coming year while we wait for that review. And I'm confident from the discussions that I've had with everybody involved that we're going to be working on that. So, I just want to commend everybody for their efforts on this and encourage the council to be supportive of the agreement that Prairie has brought to us and that Central Jack, I hope, will soon sign so we can get this underway. Thank you.
And I guess we really need to send a message to Central Jackson County wherever we stand on it. Unless there is objection, we will endorse the boundaries in the letter or the agreement that Prairie Township has already signed. Without objection?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Yeah, like I said, I, using the term "okay," I think that's a disservice to the people that live south of Wyatt. I think their lives and their, everything is, shouldn't be saying it's okay that we treat them differently. I do support this as a measure of progress.
Right.
And I do think it is time to move forward and do that. Is it okay? Meh, I'm not going to say that.
No.
I do think we should move it forward. So, in that context, I definitely encourage CJC and Prairie Township continue and do what they have committed to doing. At the same time, I think that the progress needs to continue, so.
No, and I think we're on the same page. I think we're on the same page with that. No, I think, as I said earlier, I want to go to Colburn Road.
Oh, yeah, you did, you did.
I think Ron hit on the head there. This is a first step in many steps we need to keep going down this path, so I agree with Ron.
Progress, well, let's move forward.
You know, and hopefully, this first step can deal the word that I think Councilman Cobell said, "Trust." And I think that's an important component in it, is we've got to trust each other to work together.
Absolutely.
And so, hopefully, this will be the beginning of that. So, again, without objection, we're supportive of CJC signing the agreement with Prairie Township.
I'm sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
I just, I want to make sure that it's understood we're talking about automatic...
Automatic aid.
Automatic, yes. I want to make sure the wording is that way, and that's what we are endorsing.
And time's certain before it's reviewed?
Yes.
And if I'm not mistaken, I thought I saw that in one of the documents, that it was for a specific time, or I heard it or something.
We certainly discussed it. I couldn't tell you off the top of my head.
CJC has discussed it, but I don't, I didn't see it in the document, so.
Okay. I'm certain we can trust you all to work that out?
We can get it in. It may have been, I can't remember. We've all talked about it, and I think it's essential that it be in there.
I think John Hardy is chairman of CJC right now, and I think you all know each other pretty well?
We do.
That the two of you can get together and work those out?
We will.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much for coming tonight, Harry.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to Merrill, oh, well, that's after my Merrill announcements. Merrill announcements. I'm going straight to Faust DePunta, and tonight comes from Martin Van Bie. And I quote, "Learn from the mistakes of others. You can't live long enough to make them all yourself," end quote. That brings us to the visitor section, and I have Tom Mann from the Edgewood Homeowners Association. Would you like to come up and speak to us, Tom? I don't want to rush you, but we've got five minutes before we have to close the tapes.
Take less than that. Mr. Mayor, Council, it's good to have you all here this evening, and thank you for this moment to speak. All I want to do is just say thank you to all of you that have helped us so much in working through this process. Councilwoman Culpepper and Councilman Fowler and Councilman Cobell particularly have worked directly in this thing with us, as well as city staff, Mr. Johnson, and many others that we've worked with over the last two years. And I do feel like we're making progress, and I just want to say thank you for all of you, and to Prairie Township Board for their cooperation in this too. And from our standpoint, as Edgewood homeowners who had two major fires a couple of years ago, we're feeling like we are making progress, and I do agree with the sentiments that have been stated that we do want to see it eventually go all the way to the city boundary in some way, whether it be one city, one fire protection, one emergency service coverage, or cooperative, continued cooperation that will continue to upgrade that. Because I think the city is going to continue to deal with this as the city grows to the south, and I don't think you're going to see the end of this yet, but I think we are making progress. I just want to say thank you, and thank you for your time, and thank you for your service to the city.
Well, I appreciate you coming and expressing that.
And the subdivision's patience with all this, and tenacity, both.
Well, we've seen little steps of progress, and that's kept us encouraged, so. And good communication. I do want to thank you for all those that keep us. You've done a great job of communicating with us, and we thank you for that.
Well, you know, there were a number of conversations that went on behind the scenes privately, but it was when your group came to actually meet with the city council, it's when the ball really started rolling.
Right.
Because you personally appeared and said, "We need help."
Well, we appreciate that.
We appreciate you coming and doing that.
Appreciate your response. Thank you very much.
All right. That brings us to adjournment. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of I?
Aye.
Any opposed? I doubt it. We adjourned.